Seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Kelly Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bane.
I'm here as well.
She missed me in the EDA. You're on a roll.
I'm gonna call you guys. Sorry, I don't know. Sorry.
You're totally fine.
That's one, Karen.
It's a Monday.
It's been a long Monday.
I'll ask all those that are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America. Contributing to the public which stands on our nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Council, before you, you have an agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. First item on tonight's agenda is our open forum.
Princessa.
Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm joined by my six-year-old Laura as well, so it's her first council meeting. I just had a couple of questions I want to talk about of the transition from SRC to Republic. I wasn't active in the process prior to now. I simply, you know, read some of the publications, some of the discussions, some of the details that went into it, but like a lot of people, I got my invoice. And so in the process of that, I just wanted to bring forward a couple of questions and comments. I know that you spent a lot of time doing a very thoughtful analysis of what was best for the community, the why, the details about recycling and payment and expenses and the whole bit, okay? So during the transition time, we were given a phone number to call as Forest Lake citizens during July and August. I called and left four voicemails. I got zero returns. So then I resorted to doing an email, and I got a great response from Delaina Anderson. She gave me information. I was requesting a second recycling bin. She assured me no fees, the whole bit. So after five emails or whatever, time went by. I never got a bin, you know, but I got my invoice. And so with it, my bill this last year went from $228.96 to $319, almost a 50% increase and less recycling. Even though she said there was no fee for recycling, I'm now being charged recycling. I spent 67 minutes on the phone today. It was my seventh phone call trying to address billing issues, recycling issues, and expenses. So my question for you is, is the council reviewing the proposal that was approved and these invoices? Are these invoices accurate? If so, for that extra $100 per household in the community, to me, that's pretty darn significant. What are we getting for that? When I vote for a school levy and I pay an extra $400, I see it in class sizes, I see it in programs. For an extra 50% on my garbage and recycling bill, what am I getting? And what is the council doing to look at that, to see what's going on? Why is recycling being de-incentivized? We were told, okay, so under SRC, I had two recycling bins, lots of people had two recycling bins. Heck, we don't even put out garbage every week, after we're out of diapers, of course, because we didn't generate enough. I liked that. And I was excited that the council seemed to be tackling the issue of recycling and composting and things like that, but now this gentleman I talked to today says, no, $15.50 a month per can. If you get two cans, it's twice as much. I asked him why there's a $14.70 county fee on each garbage and recycling. They couldn't answer me. They transferred me to somebody else. So, and then if the contract isn't being followed, what recourse does the community have to do something about it? Again, $100 per household, what are we getting for that? I'm seeing what we're getting for the voter levy in our classrooms, but I don't see a darn thing in my garbage and recycling, except my recycling bin's full and I don't want to pay $15.50 for an extra bin.
So, thank you for your comments. We don't, you typically respond in open forum to questions and comments like this. However, I'm gonna just drop this open forum sheet up here. If you'll leave your phone number, we will get back to you.
Okay.
And I personally would like to give you a phone call, and I know staff has some other answers for you as well. I know you may not want to stick around till the end of council updates, and the meeting is streamed online, and we will have some information as part of council updates as well, because questions you have, there's others in the community that have similar questions, so good. Thank you for being here.
Can I make a comment there, too?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm looking at this resolution thing, and it says on the bottom, 8.59%. Is that an increase? Is that an increase in tax?
And we'll do a full presentation when we're on that section of the agenda.
Oh, well, I guess what I'm wondering is, if that's an increase, did any of you who are maybe working ever get an 8.9% or 8.59% increase in your wages? It'd be pretty doggone good. I think you guys ought to think that over. Let's try to balance our budget. The federal government can't do it. I was hoping you people could, so let's live within our means here. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close open forum. We have before us items on our consent agenda, items 6A through 6J. I'll entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Our motion to approve is presented.
I'll second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. Next, item 7A, fire relief association benefit level increase. Chief Newman, are we starting with you on this?
I've got Dale Zeinert, who is president of the Forest Lake Fire Department Relief Association, will present tonight, and either Dale or I will answer questions.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dale Zeinert. I am a member of the Forest Lake Fire Department, eighteen-year member. I'm also president of the Forest Lake Fire Relief Association, and I'm here tonight requesting a benefit level increase for our paid-on-call firefighters from the current level of $4,800 to $5,300 per year of service, along with that, a mechanism for automatic increases of $200, as long as our fund remains in a positive funding ratio, 150% funded. This is not a requesting the city taxpayers to take care of this. The Relief Association has a pension fund separate from the city account, which is primarily funded through state pension aid and income from investments. However, the city council must approve any changes to our pension formula, because the city will be responsible for any deficit amount if the pension fund liabilities ever exceed the pension fund assets. So on the 6th of September, myself, along with the other members of the Relief Association and our auditors, Abdo Aiken Myers made a presentation to the Joint Fire Board, running several different scenarios, showing a current funding levels, assuming the market conditions remain the same with a 5% increase in funding, and what that does for us, as well as a not-so-pretty scenario where if the market was to be reduced 25% this year and another 10% following year, where does that put us also, trying to be strategic long-term? And even with the worst-case scenario that they laid out, we were still at 120% funding level. So I'm looking for approval tonight for the initial funding of $500 initial, along with that mechanism for $200 increase, where we would meet each year with the Joint Fire Boards and the city council, showing exactly where our fund is situated.
Questions of the Fire Board. Maybe the memo had this, and I may have missed it. It had been quite some time before there had been a previous increase. Can you?
That is correct.
Provide that context.
Yep. The last increase we got was in 2013, so six years, and then prior to that, it was in 2007. So what we're trying to do here is to get more of a long-term strategy, to get more frequent, smaller increases, as opposed to waiting for five, six, seven, eight years to try to get these increases passed. It'll certainly encourage members on the fire department to stay longer, because they see there's gonna be some increases coming down the road, and it's a good recruiting mechanism also.
And maybe just for the benefit of council, can you clarify the funding mechanism? Certainly, the city is the fallback should there be a deficit position, but the increase that you're asking for is actually funded by what? Can you provide that context?
Yep. The state fire aid is something that we get from the state every year, and the state aid that we receive each year is based on the value of the property that we cover in our coverage area. So when you pay your homeowner's insurance, your business property insurance, and so on, I think it's 2% of the funds that you pay go into a fund to the state that pays all of the fire relief associations. And so as our community continues to expand and the value of the properties increase, our funding level should continue to increase as well.
Maybe I'll point and process. Annually, you would expect to bring this back for approval of the Joint Fire Board with there being the set amount of what was recommended, but certainly Joint Fire Board could make adjustments to that year-to-year. Is that part of your expectation?
Well, we are trying to lock it in for a set amount, $200 increase, as long as the funding ratio is over 150%.
150%.
But yes, that's the plan, is to get in front of, get more frequent involvement with the Joint Fire Board and the city council to basically show the numbers. Here's where we're funding today. Next year, we sit down again and say, here's where we're sitting again.
Because that was my question, is how do we, you know, kind of monitor that balance so that we can ensure we're not getting into that deficit position if you're not coming forward annually to ask for those increases?
Right. And so that, the plan would be, we have our auditing firm, Abdo Aiken Myers, annually do our audits for us. Their audits come out typically August, September, and so our goal now is to get those audits done as quickly as possible, and as soon as that audit's completed, sit down with the Joint Fire Board and with your folks here at the city council, and just show the numbers. You know, are we still funded at 150% level or higher? Yes or no? If so, requesting a $200 increase.
That was pretty well explained at the Joint Fire Board. Meyer and I both serve on the fire, Joint Fire Board, and I think it was pretty well explained, for my part at least, that that was the way it was gonna be. We were gonna be able to review this on a regular basis, so.
I'll echo some of the comments here that I made in Joint Fire Board meeting. So I think this is important for us to evaluate as councils, we look to be able to maintain the paid-on-call model that we currently have for firefighters, and we have a history of these reimbursements, as you can see in this particular, or this compensation, you can see in this particular model, where we've gone years and years without an adjustment, and then we do this big shock, and then we go years and years without an adjustment. So having some sort of an annual mechanism to get into something that was more routine, I think is in all of our best interests. Certainly, we may or may not have landed on the right number this year, but I think to have the commitment to do an increase and then the commitment to evaluate it every year with some mechanism of what that floor should be and what the triggering point should be, I think is a solid next step. Any other questions from council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd make the motion that we increase annual benefit level for the paid-on-call firefighters from $4,800 to $5,300 per year of service, and a mechanism for automatic annual increases of $200, as long as the fund remains above a positive funding ratio of 150%.
I'll second. And a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a question, does that include city council approval every year, or is that truly automatic?
I think it was, the idea was to have a review.
I just want to make sure that you review it or approve it or do whatever you have to do, not, I mean, automatic means nobody has to look at it, keeps going and going and going.
Chief Newman?
Yes. What's automatic is the mechanism for the process, and so every year, we will bring it in front of the Joint Fire Board first, and then we're hoping, if we're over that 150% funding level, that it's approved. You always have the ability to say no. We're not binding you, but we're making it a process, because what's happened in the past, and why we get such big timeframes in between requests is, we're building new fire stations, so let's not bring it up. And then we're buying a new truck, so let's not bring it up. And so as a result, you just, you get 10 years in between requests, and so we're just, we're looking for a mechanism that gets it in front of the Joint Fire Board and council, but it's not binding.
Okay. But I would modify my motion if you don't mind. Would you have something to say?
No, go ahead.
Okay. My motion would include then an annual review of the city council.
Perfect. And you'll second the amended motion? Very good. Any further discussion? Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, before you, we have a number of resolutions, donations for Lake Fest. We have a resolution recognizing a number of donations for Lake Fest. Olson Sewer and Excavating Service, $500. Bolton and Mink, $250. Jesse Johnson Insurance, $250. And LaGrande, for $250. I will make a motion that we approve with thanks, Resolution 923-1902, donations for Lake Fest.
I'll second.
And we've got a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 7C, Resolution 923-1903, Pond Maintenance Project Award. Is this Ryan? Please?
Mayor, city council, in front of you is quotes results for a pond maintenance project. It's pond identification number P0584. This is a maintenance project, but just want to be transparent about how stormwater dollars are being spent, so we thought we'd bring this forward as a council agenda item, as this was a priority identified in the pond evaluations that were completed in previous years. This also was discussed at our joint workshop, and it was a priority of the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Barsha District as well. So this pond is located at 15th Street Southeast and 12th Avenue Southeast, just on the west side of Castlewood Golf Course, takes a significant drainage area, and then directly discharges into Forest Lake. So prioritizing the sediment removal projects restores the pond to its original treatment capacity and will improve the stormwater management system's ability to improve water quality. Got very, very good bids, so it's our recommendation to award the project to Peterson and Companies Incorporated in the amount of $55,240, as stated in Resolution Number 09231903.
Any questions for Ryan on this? I'll make, having been on council when we had a significant number of work and workshops on overall pond maintenance, this is the outcome of a lot of that work and recognition, that we as a city have many stormwater ponds, and many of them, over the years, have deteriorated. Up until a couple of years ago, we did not have an active maintenance plan for those, and this is the next step in not just having a plan, but actually executing on that plan for overall maintenance. Important work that contributes to overall water quality. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 09-23-19-03, Resolution awarding contract for pond maintenance project P0584 to Peterson Companies in the amount of $55,240.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And oppose? Motion carries. Okay, move it on. Next item this evening, adoption of our 2020 preliminary levy. Patrick, I believe you have a presentation for council?
Yeah, before you vote on the levy, I thought we'd kind of go over, similar to the presentation we did at the beginning of the budget session, just a little more of the information, and a presentation that will closely resemble what we're going to do with the public sessions. And they may change a little bit between now and then, but I thought it'd be best that we could go through those. So, to start, let's start. So we've been through the 22nd and September 9th and September 16th, so here we are at September 23rd. We're going to certify the proposed levy. What's left in there between now and December, we will talk about, we will have a truth and taxation public hearing, and then finally, an adoption of levy that will give you opportunity to, the council will change anything, or if we, as staff, see different needs or different revenues or expenditure changes that we feel necessary to come forward to the council and make those suggestions.
I'll skip that one. The total expenditure of the budget this year equals $26,256,380. You can see the, obviously, the different funds that make that total up. As always, general fund is always the largest fund of any budget that we have. This year, with the new projects and the construction of the new roundabout and associated other projects, the capital improvement or paving is high, and then the water fund and sewer fund also have a number of projects that we're going to address this year. Just showing again, 37% of our budget is the general fund. The proposed operation tax levy. Now, I broke out the operational tax levy from the road tax levy that we're going, just to show you, if we had not proposed and not contemplated $4 million bond for the roads, this is where your levy would be at. With the refinancing of the building and the addition of monies for the capital paving fund and for the capital equipment fund, we would've been at 5.48%. That's if you did nothing else with the roads. Fortunately, you're going down the path of doing something about the roads, because the roads need to, pretty badly. If you take that into context about former levies, here's what it would look like. It'd be fairly, starting to even out a little bit compared to 2018 and 2017. So just, where does the tax levy go? Well, 71% of it goes to the general fund, which is the major portion of the city's budget and most of the cost of the city's labor, materials, and supplies. 7% is going to capital equipment. That means, this is a long-term mechanism for funding, the need to replace our major pieces of rolling stock and equipment. That means fire trucks, squad cars, plows, sweepers, equipment of any kind and shape. Only less than a half percent's going to the paving improvement fund. Again, we're starting to build that. That's $50,000. We hope to continue to build that, so we can get on a regular basis of improving our roads. 20% is designated for debt service. The majority of that debt service is the bond on this building, and will include eventually the bond on the road, and again, another half, less than half percent on the economic development fund. The operational needs that has been identified and included in this year's budget is a police captain's position. It completes the staffing recommendations for additional supervision in the police department. The chief has recommended the captain's position in lieu of a detective sergeant's position. It's equivalent to adding four additional police officers. We'll begin and have July 2020 implementation, and the first-year impact will be $32,000. With this plan, we expect to save $40,000 in overtime costs. Code enforcement, that's one of our biggest complaints we get over the phone and in person on a regular basis, that people have messy yards, or they put a fence in the wrong place, or et cetera like that. This begins to address that. Again, it is a July 2020 implementation, so it'll be a half-year implementation with a cost of $40,000. Also identified in the strategic plan, along with roads, were the need of the city to, A, provide more communications to the public, a better communication system, and also to increase and help consider more recreation programs and parks. We've tried to be creative here a little bit and combine those two positions to see how that works. Hopefully, we will be successful in having that one position, and we'll also analyze that over the course of next year. That is also included as a halftime implementation in July. As far as wages, benefits, and cost of services, well, cost of services and materials never go down. They usually go up, other than petroleum, which can bounce around. Mostly, everything goes up. Four of our five union contracts are settled, and they're all settled for three years, and we will be negotiating the fifth contract in October. We expect that also to be completed fairly quickly in October, so that we will have all our unions in place, all our unions' contracts settled, so we will be able to include those in future budgets and predict what we need in future years. I think it's a great, great thing to have all those settled and in place, so we don't have to worry about funding or anything, or any labor strife. Road bonding. Well, we have to meet the challenge, because it's a very large challenge that we have. Again, it was the number-one concern that we found in the strategic planning process. Our replacement and repair of streets are woefully underfunded. Our goal as a city should be and is, is to have at least all of our roads score a minimum of five on a scale of one to 10. It would be nice to have a medium score, if not higher, if we could afford it, but the bottom line should be, no road should really be under five, if we can manage. The roads continue without any maintenance, without any attention, they deteriorate more and more. When we did the road rating, and we'll get to this, in 2018, the roads were rated then, but over the winter, they got worse. Certain roads got worse than others, so that the priority of roads, what to fix and how to change, will change on a yearly basis, depending on how bad the traffic is or how bad the weather is that affects those roads. We only resurface or fix our roads funded through franchise fees and state shared revenues. We do, until today, or till this budget's approved, we will not and do not put any property tax into roads at all. That's an unusual thing for municipalities to do. The state shares funds, however, for the next three to five years are dedicated to the local match of state and county road projects. So the $700 or whatever $1,000 that we get from the state is already spoken for for the next three to five years, which further impacts our ability to pave roads and keep them at a place where people would like to drive down them in comfort and at least not worry about their transmission falling out or something like that. Forest Lake has under 30 miles of road. 105 miles of those are paved. 55, 4% of our roads are rated at six below, so half of our roads are in pretty difficult shape. That's a, that's a pretty big number. So for every dollar we spend on maintenance and repair, we save $7 in repairs. So that's even more the reason why we should be concentrating on keeping our roads in shape and doing the maintenance and repairs that we need to do. Preventative maintenance projects on roads can prolong lifestyles of roads to 50-plus years or more, depending on what kind of resurfacing and what kind of reconstruction's done. The new bond that we're proposing would allow the resurfacing of our roads to go from the proposed 4.8 miles to over 12 miles over the next three years. That's, that'll significantly put a dent in what our rating of the roads are. As I mentioned earlier, the 2020 levy begins to start to fund the street repairs and road repairs at $50,000 in a tax levy. We will need to increase that as we go along. I would estimate that the city of Forest Lake probably needs at least $1 million to $1 million and a half annually to keep up with its roads at the five or more level that we talk about. We will include this in the 10-year plan and come back with you with more suggestions on how to fund it and options, if there are any more different funds and options. And finally, we're also reallocating some of the fund balance this year to help us fund the roads a little bit more. If you include that operational fund that I mentioned earlier and the road bond, it brings the total of the levy increase to 8.59%. I know that's a big number, and it is a big number, but if we continue to allow our roads to roads to deteriorate, sooner or later, that number will be humongous, and we'll have to do something very much different. And I don't want to be around here when those tax levies have to be put in place. If you look at the levy increase with that, yeah, it shows that it's bounced up a little bit more, but that's, again, that's what we're trying to accomplish. We hope in the future to, again, keep that levy increase stable and flat as can be, so that we don't have to raise, bounce those rates up on an annual basis. It should be a level increase, if any. This is a history of our recent tax rate. That's the calculation the county uses. As you see, back in a high of 2014 at 44.653%. Last year, the revised number came in from the county, and we just got that a few weeks ago, at 39.5. We're proposing a 41.332% tax rate this year. How do we compare? Well, based on 2016 data from the League of Minnesota Cities, and they don't have the '17s or '18s yet, if we place that 41.332%, you see that we're on the lower end of the comparable cities. These are the cities we use on a regular basis to compare ourselves to. As you see, we're not at 63%, like Hastings, or up that way. So, that indicates that we, the city's been responsible stewards of the tax money and has kept it as low as possible. If you take that rate compared to metro cities of population between 10 and 24,900, the average tax rate is 46.96%. I talked about the comparable cities already. 44 is the average, 44.5 is the average. And if you look at Greater Minnesota, all of Minnesota with a population of 10,000 to 24,000 residents, it's 52.448. So, I think we're doing okay with the comparison tax rate. I know often, the focus is on what the percentage increase is on the tax levy, when we really should be looking at what the percentage and how we compare to other cities and how that actual tax rate works out. So, what does it do? Well, if you purchase a home with a value of $300,000, if you have a home with a $300,000 property tax bill to support city services, it'll be approximately $1,197. Now, this calculation, often we give you calculations. This one, we took the time and went to the county and included all of the homestead exemptions and anything else, credits that you get from the county. When you usually see the numbers, or you'll see numbers in the next couple of slides, those are just raw, you know, just base numbers. But these are, this is an actual bill for a $300,000 home, based on what we are proposing. It's $99.75 per month for a resident to support city services. $23 a week or $3 a day. So, what do you get? Well, you get 24-hour police service, 24-hour, seven-days-a-week fire protection service. You get all the streets, public work, street lighting, snow plowing, engineering, and everything else that the city provides. You get parks, trails, and recreation opportunities. So, when you compare that to a, you know, an electric bill or something like that, you're getting a lot of services for, I think, for a decent amount of money. This is the, just, this is how the county calculated the tax rate. I just thought I'd show that. The certified levy, they take out the physical disparity, and that's how we determined the tax rate. If you look at the difference between tax rate, that's only a 4.4% increase in the tax rate for next year. Just thought we'd show you how the county actually does that calculation. So, again, looking at some raw numbers, this is the impact on home values of 250, 300,000, 400,000, and 500,000. 4.4% means $43.80 per year for a $250,000 home, $52.56 for a $300,000 home, $70.08 for a $400,000 home, and $87.60 for a $500,000 square foot home, or valued home, sorry. That's what I have. That's kind of running through the numbers quick, but showing that I think that we're on the right course. I think we're making the right decisions, even though I know it's difficult for the council and will be for the citizens to understand why their taxes are increased. But if you really look at it, the operational impact is in line with what we've done. It's the road issue that we have to address and are starting to face that's going to cause a little bit larger levy than probably anybody's really comfortable with. Questions?
Thank you, Patrick.
Just a comment. Thank you for all the work. It's very clear to me, very well laid out tonight. Thank you.
The only comment that I would make aligns with Councilmember Gerard was that, you know, during the campaign, a lot of us campaigned on infrastructure, and that was what we heard out in the community, is they wanted better infrastructure in our city. And then, when we did the strategic plan, we asked again, and this is really a reflection of what we heard. And I think, as difficult as it may be to raise the tax levy, I think we can't just keep admiring the problem. We have to do something about it.
Thank you.
I'll echo those comments. If you're watching this, and if this conversation seems a little light, please know, this is, we have workshopped and asked many detailed questions around the budget, and so I think I'm interpreting in the council silence that they have their questions answered. We, you know, we've talked a lot about infrastructure, and we've talked about the need to have this 10-year infrastructure plan for all city assets. And as I look at this, although it's a bold move, and there are some big numbers in here, it does reflect exactly what the community has been telling us that they want, and it's also reflected what staff has said is needed, as far as, in particular, some of these infrastructure needs. Also, as it relates, you know, there's a number of staffing positions on here, and as I reflect on what we've done already in 2019, there's a number of staffing moves. And I think, as leaders, it's our job to make sure that we've got the right people in the right place to perform the right services for the city. Certainly, you've seen council make some adjustments to align staff to where the priority is, and I think this budget also reflects that. Also, in this budget, are areas where we are just getting started, knowing that we aren't going to solve every challenge overnight. And so, I think this is a solid next step, and I look forward to hearing the community's feedback in our workshop sessions coming up, or our open house sessions coming up. We will be actively soliciting some community feedback.
I just, Mayor Bean and members of the council just have a, kind of a thought about, kind of, these staffing additions. In really pondering this over the course of the last couple of weeks, I would love, and actually having an opportunity to really review that CPSM report, the recommendations to our police department on, you know, staffing and the direction we need to go. I think, I personally would really like an opportunity to do a little bit of a deep dive in that, between now and the time we do the final approval of the levy. There were some pieces in there that were really intriguing to me, in particular, kind of that role of the community service officer relative to potentially pulling some of the burden off of patrol. And when we're pondering also a code enforcement position, is there an opportunity there for maybe a dual role, for example? I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the best practices are, recommendations, and that's part of the reason why I'm asking if we can maybe take a workshop deep dive into this. And, you know, and then to hear from Chief, too, to try to better understand, kind of, his numbers around the overtime savings and the change equivalent to adding the four additional police officers. It's, I think we need some time, you know, to kind of process that. So, I would just, I would like to really take a deeper look at this. I know Chief Peterson mentioned even, you know, as, well, at our 9-9 meeting, our September 9th meeting, that we're seeing a real spike in calls for service, and a lot of the complaints that I'm getting around this in the community are kind of on that patrol side. So, I would love to kind of take a look at, you know, at this holistically, and not that we don't need that succession plan in place. That's not what I'm saying. It's just an opportunity, I think, to really be thoughtful about, kind of, the progression of those adds to the department based on the need. So, that would be my request.
We certainly have, we certainly have calendar time to do some additional workshop sessions around staffing. And Chief Peterson, perhaps, could you forward on to all of council, that CPSM study that was done? I think it was reviewed in detail by our previous council. And then, also, I know there's been a couple of staff updates on what's been done from a staffing perspective. If those reports could be forwarded on as well, that'd be good.
I just want to echo some of the questions that Councilperson Beistrum has about staffing and that kind of thing, because we just really have to be conscious of what's going on with our taxes. I mean, everybody's out for the tax dollar. I mean, we have to make the city work, and the school board is no different. You know, there's been a voter-approved bond and a voter-approved referendum, and, of course, we had to raise the water rates, and so, all those things add up to a total. So, we have to be really careful that, and if there's any way we can, you know, take a hard look at this thing and for a final levy, to make sure that we're not hurting our goal. But at the same time, maybe there's some places where we can work around a little bit, too. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not quite, me personally, I'm not done with this particular levy budget. So, it's going to give us an opportunity to, and I know we have to start somewhere, don't get me wrong. We've got to start somewhere, and we can tear this thing apart between now and December. So, and that's kind of what I plan on doing. But in a way, that, we have to achieve our goals, and as far as the, I've said it before, the bonding for the roads has been, it's absolutely necessary. There's no question about it. And I don't know what the bond rates are, no, a couple of percent or whatever they are.
Two or below.
There's no way that we could ever get money any cheaper than that. And so, those are things that I certainly am in favor of. So, anyways, that's all comments I have on it, for now.
Agreed. Good news about tonight is we don't need to be final on anything. Tonight is all about preliminary levy, and certainly, council has between now and December to make adjustments and bring forward a final budget or final approval in December.
Some public input will be nice, too.
And, absolutely.
Right out about it.
Any other questions, comments?
What is the plan for the public input?
Yes, so, I believe Patrick had this in his, Patrick, can you flip to that slide? So, there's two public comments, or two op-
I don't have those on there, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have them on, no.
They're not on there. Let's talk about it. There are, there are two sessions that are set for, I'm looking at different dates, I'm sorry. There's two sessions that are set for open house, the first being Thursday, October, I have these in my EDN notes, Thursday, October 3rd, 6:00 to 7:30 PM upstairs in the community room. And then, there is an identical session scheduled for the next day, Friday, October 4th, over the lunch hour, 11:30 to 1 PM, also upstairs in the community room. The format of those sessions is intended to be very informal, so that individuals can get specific questions answered. We will go over at the beginning of a session, an overall overview, probably something very similar to what council was presented tonight, just to get some initial information out there, lay the framework for discussion, and certainly, plenty of time for questions to be asked and answered, an opportunity for the community, really, to understand what we're looking at for a 2020 budget. Both of those, I believe, are set as events on the city's Facebook page, and also will be included in the weekly email blast.
I'm going to send out a separate email blast, so that it's-
Perfect.
-recognized.
Thanks.
So, on Wednesday, I'll be sending that out.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I just, I just want to make one more statement about this whole staffing, kind of, deep dive in the CPSM. This is not discounting Chief's recommendation by any stretch of the imagination. It's just, I need to do my due diligence to be sure I am comfortable with my decision-making. So, you know, I have tremendous faith in our PD, and I just want what's best for our PD and our community simultaneously, so.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, council, in front of you, we have Resolution 9231904, and I will entertain a motion for that resolution.
And, Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept Resolution Number 09-23-19-04, approving the 2020 preliminary property tax levy and general fund budget, and setting the public hearing date for the 2020 budget and property tax levy.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Before I vote, I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody knows it is a preliminary. We can say that over and over and over, that this thing isn't cut and stone, okay?
Also, just one more point of clarification. There's a couple of dates, and there's an official date related to the, the public hearing for the final property tax levy is set for December 9th. So, that is on top of those workshop sessions that we were just talking about. And then, the bond issuance will also require a public hearing, and that will also be in October. And so, I just want everyone to be clear on what those dates are and those opportunities for public comment. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And that brings us to staff updates. Chief Newman?
I have no updates, unless you have questions for me.
Anything for Chief Newman this evening? Chief Peterson?
Yeah, the only update I have for you is with the nice weather that we've been observing lately. We've had been able to keep the speed trailer out there, so hopefully, you see it out and about in the neighborhoods and on the highways and the county roads, and hopefully, it's making an impact on people and slowing them down. So, continue to keep those emails coming, or phone calls coming. If there are any locations that citizens or residents would like to see the speed trailer at, we will get it out there and have it out there until, as long as the weather's permitting. Other than that, I don't have any updates for you, if you have any questions for me.
Questions? Dan?
I just want to give the council just a quick update on the Cable Commission's budget. Typically, in past years, you've seen preliminary budgets from the Cable Commission by now. There was a recent FCC ruling that has a pretty significant impact on the amount of franchise fees that the Cable Commission can, will be receiving in the future years. There was a 3-2 vote that came through, probably high potential that that will be relegated out. So, right now, what Paul, not Councilmember Gerard, but Paul from the Cable Commission is doing is reaching out to Midco to set a meeting to kind of see what that potential impact's going to be, and then we'll be making adjustments to the budget moving forward for '20. So, just kind of given that, the timing of the FCC ruling came down in August and went into effect in September, so there's kind of a lot of gray area in terms of what the revenues are going to be moving forward for next year. But I, what their approach to the budget is, is kind of develop a one-year budget for '20, because I kind of, in looking at the FCC ruling, there's a potential that whatever's in place for '20 might be in person '21, because if it gets relegated, that funding mechanism could change moving forward. So, there's a little bit of delay, but they will be bringing it back probably, I wouldn't want to say November, is when hopefully, they'll have the numbers from Midco, so there will be an update forthcoming.
Thank you. And when you said 3-2 vote, was that the FCC 3-2 vote?
Correct. Yeah, sorry, I should have clarified. It was 3-2 vote at the FCC level.
Any questions for Dan? Hearing none. Sandy?
No further updates for mine.
Very good. Karen?
No updates.
Patrick?
No, just one, we have a conference call Wednesday with Big River Group to talk about the strategic plan, and hopefully, arrange to wrap that up soon. So, we'll know more Wednesday, what the process, what we're going to do.
Very good. Bridgette?
Thank you.
Ryan?
No updates.
Dave?
No updates.
Very good. Councilmember Gerard?
Yes, on Saturday, the mayor and I went to the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake watershed tour of the local projects in our area, and it was a very informative tour. They do a lot of hard work and a lot of research and detailed analysis before they spend a nickel. So, I'm just really, really happy to have attended that and be their liaison, because they really do a lot of, a lot of good work.
Councilmember Munson?
I attended the FLAW meeting last week, and really, their fall sports are moving, and it sounds like, they haven't set a date yet, but next year's community night will be in June again, since the weather is a little sketchy in September.
Councilmember Beistrum?
I attended the senior center board meeting, the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission meeting, where they reviewed the proposal for the Belts Park master- Attended the YMCA Board meeting, and I just wanted to remind folks of the Lions Senior Turkey Dinner this week on Thursday, and had a report from the Clear Lake, Lake Association that Blue Water Science came out and did a review of the late summer vegetation. Over 140 sites were tested, and they did not find any milfoil, so the treatment was a huge success, and they should not see milfoil for the next three to five years, and if they do see a little bit of it, it can just be spot checked, so that was a, that was a huge success. And then I also wanted to say, hoping our students and staff have a great homecoming this Friday, and stay safe out there, go Rangers.
Very good. Councilmember Muntzen?
I don't have any updates either, I've been working out of town, so I missed the last school board meeting, which was during that, that meeting, it was their workshops and that kind of thing, so, sorry about that, but we'll get back on track again, hopefully, this Thursday, and let you know what's going on.
Very good. I have a couple of updates here, had an opportunity to attend the FLOW Community Night, and kudos to them for choosing a night in June rather than September, it would be a more broadly attended event and with warmer weather. Also, had an opportunity to attend the mock funeral for the high school's mock car crash. Many kudos and thanks to all of the Forest Lake staff that went into that event, it takes a lot of coordination and planning, and I believe this is something that they have been filming for months now, it was great to see all of that come together, and a very, it was very impactful, about a 45-minute presentation to the high school students, right, and well timed, right before, right before homecoming on the distractions of drinking and distracted driving. It was really well done, and also, really well, there is a 20-minute video that was produced by LATV, and Paul Peterson, who did the production on that video, it is just a masterpiece, it is a really, really well-done, great asset, and so, let's keep a keen eye on that budget, on what we need to do to make that a sustainable entity, because what a gift they are to this community to have that, so thanks to everybody that was involved. Also, had an opportunity to attend at the invitation of Dr. Massey at Forest Lake Area Schools, a joint, a joint meeting he held with local leaders around a partnership that the school district is getting ready to embark on with the YMCA, related to some training opportunities around equity and inclusion. As those events are set, and as those kind of next steps are determined, we will keep council up to date, so that you are able to attend and participate as your schedule allows, and actually, it's a great, I'm seeing a curriculum being developed that would be a great asset for all of our community leaders, so certainly something we would perhaps want to consider other boards and commissions attending as well. Also, had an opportunity to attend the Career Force launch with Washington County. Washington County workforce development is now reorganized and relaunched, and so they had a career planning event at the Hardwood Creek facility, and was a great opportunity to reconnect with a number of local businesses, Washington County, and DED resources. And then, the EDA has had a very busy meeting right before this council meeting. We reviewed the wetland delineation results and Phase 1 environmental study, studies that have been done on the Headwaters 123 parcel, so those assets are done, and those are now assets for any interested investors to use on those properties. Also, great to talk about and hear an update on the Minnesota Technology Corridor and all of the great work that's happening there. And also, we started to talk about re-energizing the marketing efforts around the airport business park, and kind of some next steps to kind of put into, put some new life into that project. As this council knows, we just, you know, we're sitting with a fairly sizable negative fund balance where it relates to that property, and then kind of, there's some motivation on the part of the EDA, certainly myself, on what's next for that property, and how do we get some action there to get us out of that fund balance and just positive community development, so, all in all, a very good EDA meeting. Not having anything else on our agenda this evening, thank you, council, for the good work tonight, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second, two seconds.
Motion and several seconds. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. And we're adjourned.